Under God, be invisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call.
Grandquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Mooney.
Here.
Faust.
File.
Here.
Okay, and I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, if you will please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, next would be approval of the full agenda as included in your packet.
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the full agenda, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Under action items, we're going to, at the request of, take item number twenty-seven under your regular agenda and move that to the very beginning here, which is item twenty-seven, consideration of approval of ordinance number five-three, five-six, granting a franchise to PBN LLC to operate and to maintain a cable television system in Norfolk, Nebraska. If I could, can I have a motion for consideration?
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance five-three, five-six.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion with a second, and it looks like we have someone that wants to come forward, sign in for us, if you will, please state your name, and we will hear from you, sir.
My name is Paul Schudl. I'm a lawyer from Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm here representing PBN LLC, so Mayor Footman, members of the council, city administrators. PBN, as you noted, is seeking approval of ordinance number five-three, five-six to offer competitive cable television service in the city of Norfolk. With me this evening is Mr. Clint Arnold, who is the general manager of PBN, and Mr. Will Fogel, who is the vice president of PBN. Mr. Arnold will present information regarding the application and will answer any questions, or at least attempt to answer any questions you might have. We have a map of the city, which we'll put on the easel, and Mr. Arnold will be referring to that.
Can I have a look at that? Well, good. Again, my name is Clint Arnold. I'm a general manager of Pierce Telephone and also PBN, Pierce broadband networks. And thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time. I kind of wanted to go over what we've done in the city of Norfolk already, and a few of the things we want to do yet. On our map, the green line is our network as it's built today. We spent the last two and a half years constructing this process.
But before you get going to, I can see some interested faces out there as well. Can we push you over toward Randy there, and maybe Randy will allow you to use his microphone? So that you can kind of, I'm not quite sure everybody's going to be able to have a vision, but...
Okay. Do you guys see the map up here? Okay. Again, this is what PBN has accomplished over the last two and a half years in the city of Norfolk. We've got about forty-two miles of fiber optics spread throughout the city and surrounding areas. You'll notice on the map, there's some key locations in the city. It's all redundant fiber, which means it's non-fail, two different paths out of two different directions. You'll see the green line going north, and then the green line going west. That hits our other two exchanges, Pierce and Hoskins, and that's what allows us to give the redundancy to the city of Norfolk. Right now, we're sitting at a 20-gig network in both rings, soon to be larger. We offer ETS service, telephone service, internet service, and now we would like to offer TV service on this. I guess that's pretty much, I can show you the map a little closer, and I can get you guys copies of it if you want sometime, but we're pretty much through and around the whole city, at least in a few route. So I guess if there's any questions, I can sure try and answer them for you.
Can I assume this is just within the city of Norfolk, or can you give a little bit?
Can I stand? I'm trying to be loud enough.
Yeah, that's fine.
The city of Norfolk right here, this is Eisenhower, right here.
Okay.
This is Third and Seventh Street.
Yep.
Okay, and down here is covered to seven to five, and then down below here is the river. So we've completely circled to do Norfolk.
Okay.
And then right here is Riverside Drive. We go all the way down to the downtown area, and that's where the one-way access is throughout the downtown. Out on the eastern half here is, is Woodland Park is right in the center of the circle. We've encased that, the ring. There's a whole bunch of the Tower Hill out there on East Norfolk Avenue. That's the street right here. Here's the roundabout. Here's the college, we've done extensive work in that area, around there. The hospital is right here. And then here's One Fifth Street, the most banks up here on top, which is going to be late. This is Walmart, Old Craft, affiliate fruit area down here, a pretty small area down there. So, and then we have a twenty-two mile section here that goes all the way back to Pierce, and then a thirteen mile section that goes from that corner all the way down to Hoskins, which gives us the downtown area.
Okay.
Where are the servers located? Servers? We have servers in Pierce and in Hoskins.
Counsel, any questions at all?
So Clint, are there further plans to expand further within the city of Norfolk? I heard you mentioned downtown Norfolk that way.
Downtown, we get a lot of requests from downtown. You know, we try and build where the demand is, and that's generally, right now, where it's coming from. We've fed like the big factories in that first, and then a lot of banks here in town. The, you know, you kind of get those guys down right away as soon as you can, try to build to the guys that you want the most. So downtown really hitting us hard right now. The hospital, we've done extensive work there, and we're extremely talented, too.
Because I'm not very smart on some of this kind of stuff, if there's fiber there, that means cable would be available to me.
Correct.
Right?
Just in the areas.
Fiber in the area, then cable would be available. Okay.
So right now, how much of Norfolk is covered? That's in terms of residential households?
Not very many right at the moment. Like I said, we built to the, the demand first and demand is business.
So you're focused mostly on business use?
At this time, we were when we first built, yes.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay.
Your timeframe, this passes, you were looking at having cable up?
And TV, this is in Hoskins. We're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else that you have that wants to come forward there to speak to this or give explanation of, I think the questions, it seems like...
Unless they're interested in your, in your bundle offering, we did make copies of the bundle offerings.
Okay. Okay. Okay, okay, very good. I just couldn't think of any why. Okay, just, okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, if no other questions, no further discussion among. I'm going to ask for a short title on this, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, granting a franchise to PBN LLC, a Nebraska limited liability company, referred to herein as grantee or PBN, to operate and maintain a cable television system in the city of Norfolk, setting forth conditions accompanying the granting of the franchise, providing for city regulation and use of the cable television system, providing for the payment of franchise fees, providing penalty for the violation of the ordinance provisions, providing a repealer, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, and with that, I would ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-three, fifty-six carries on first reading.
Okay, appreciate your coming out tonight. Thanks very much. Nice meeting you. And certainly what we will do is, this will be heard again because it's now been introduced to the public, and we'll wait to hear if there's further discussion. So two weeks, they'll be back on second reading. So thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's jump back, if we could, now to public hearing, item number nineteen on your agenda, public hearing to comply with the provisions of NRS eighteen dash seventeen fifty-five to acquire property at five-ten South Fourth Street. I would open the hearing and look to, no, who?
We're working with Christ Lutheran Community Church and School down there. They would like to have the alley that runs south between the church, or immediately east of the church vacated. They're proposing to build a new alley across just where their playground equipment is, and the city would acquire that piece of property about twenty feet wide by the depth of a lot. And state statutes require that we have a public area anytime we're acquiring property. The price will be one dollar. The church will provide for construction of the alley, resurfacing the alley, and when that stuff's done, then we'll be back with a vacation ordinance to vacate that property between, vacate the alley between the new alley and Pazwalk Avenue.
Okay.
Answering questions you might have.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to come forward and talk to this?
Dennis, with vacating that alley, is it going to affect any of the residents that are further north?
No, when we get the, when we get this piece put back in, they will be able to traverse from Fourth Street, alley north to Park, or vice versa. When they get to Fourth Street, they'll have to turn around and go back to the north, being it's a one-way street. That's the only slight difference.
Okay.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'm going to close this hearing and ask for consideration of approval of an agreement between the city and Christ Lutheran Church of Norfolk related to the north-south alley between South Fourth Street and South Fifth Street, where it is connected to Pazwalk Avenue.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second for approval of the agreement, if no further discussion. I'm going to ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. Next on our regular agenda is the July sales tax report, which actually is the May sales. So Randy, you want to talk with us for a bit?
Yes, Your Honor. We received eight-hundred-seventy-nine thousand nine-hundred-seventy-three dollars this month for sales tax. This is the second month of the extra half-cent sales tax for the library expansion and renovation, and it's the first month that it's reflecting motor vehicle, at least the full impact of motor vehicle sales. As you can see from the agenda packet, we've got almost two-hundred-twenty thousand dollars this month of the additional half-cent sales tax, and this is the first month that it contains any significant motor vehicle sales at the two percent rate. On motor vehicle sales tax is received by the city two months after the purchases are made normally. Motor vehicle sales tax is usually paid three months after the vehicle's bought. Taxes are a significant part, or significant cost when you go down to register a vehicle. Most people put that off until the end of the thirty-day period when they can register the vehicle. So most cars purchased in April when the sales tax, additional half-cent sales tax went into effect probably were registered in May. County pays that sales tax to the state in June. The state pays it to the city in July. So we've, we've now got a full month's revenue on additional half-cent, the first month that had the full impact of that. Receipts for the one-and-a-half percent sales tax in July were six-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars compared to six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand two-sixteen in July of last year. This year's sales tax receipts for July were reduced ninety-eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars because of a, either a Nebraska Advantage or the LB nine-seven, LB seven-seven-five program, the Employment and Economic Incentive Act, I believe is what that was called, the predecessor to Nebraska Advantage Act. We get notified by the state a year ahead of time of any significant refunds that are going to be deducted from our sales tax check. So they sent out a letter at the end of last July informing us that this July's sales tax would be reduced by that amount. If it wasn't for that reduction, our sales tax for the month would have been up about three-point-three percent from last year. Here today, our one-and-a-half percent sales tax is up more than four-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, or a little over seven percent. I think that's due primarily to the impact of the June of last year's hailstorm. Answering any questions?
Any questions at all, counsel, for Randy? Okay, very good. Thanks, Randy. Moving on. Next on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number five-three, four-eight. It's authorizing the sale of the city auditorium at one-twenty-seven North First Street to Young Men's Christian Association of Norfolk for the purchase price of one dollar. Reminder that ordinance number five-three, four-eight was tabled at the June fifteenth, twenty-fifteen city council meeting for further discussion as per the council request, passed then on second, I'm sorry, passed on first reading on July sixth, twenty-fifteen, special city council meeting, and passed on second reading as amended at the July twentieth, twenty-fifteen council meeting. So I'm looking for a motion for consideration of ordinance number five-three, four-eight on the final third reading.
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second, and as there is no discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-three, forty-eight carries on third reading.
Okay. All right, next we have item number twenty-three, consideration of resolution number twenty-fifteen dash twenty, approving a hard surfacing waiver for Off-Road Speedway LLC at twenty-nine-oh-four Old Highway Eight. Resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty was tabled at the July twentieth, twenty-fifteen city council meeting. That's it? Okay, the first thing I need is a motion to take resolution twenty-fifteen twenty off of the table.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and with that, ready for discussion? Clint, you want to go forward?
Talk to that, Your Honor. The, one of the things that's, when this was tabled, there were a couple of discussions about, about some things that were in the, in the resolution that was before you last year, last week, last year, it just seems like that, two weeks ago. In any event, what we've, what we've got before you that's in the packet, and if it meets with your favor, you would be able to amend this into the resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty that you just took off the table. We've made some, we've made some changes in the, in the resolution to kind of clean up some language, but if you go down in the, in the be of resolve part, the first thing that we've done is we've referred to this as a waiver as opposed to a modification. One of the things we talked about last time was that this was, this was, was aimed at what's, what's, what would be before you if you approved this. This is an amendment would be waiving the hard surfacing requirements for the duration of the conditional use permit, basically. And the second part of that, as opposed to modifying them where they're phased in over a couple-of-year period or whatever. The other thing is that the, what, when we, when we have these hard surfacing requirements and the waiver, the modification of it, it only applies to the required parking stalls. So we've clarified that, that it only requires, it only, it only applies to the number of required parking stalls. Trent, when we were talking about this, I think that that's based on the, on the number of people that can sit in the seats, and I think that the calculations that you have for that look like there were two-hundred required parking stalls or thereabouts by the code. Is that basically correct?
That's correct, Clint.
So that's what the waiver applies to, is the two-hundred required parking stalls. And sometimes when we look in the community and we see that, if, if you see a facility or a business that has both some paved parking and some unpaved parking, they might have some unpaved parking that they never got a conditional use permit for, or they, they never got a parking modification or waiver for. And the reason for that is because that, that was excess, excess parking. It wasn't required, so they didn't need any waiver for it. So that's why we see some of those things in the community. Then if you look on, if you look on the numbers that are number one and number two, we've made a change from where those were, if, again, if you embrace this, this resolution with, with the modification from last time. The first thing what we've done is we've basically said this goes until October twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four. That would be a timeframe that is consistent with the conditional use permit that was granted there. The second thing about that is, in following the, the city code regarding those, any action beyond that date, if there's a new conditional use permit, if there's a new, would, would require a new hard surfacing waiver. So, and that can only occur, as is talked about in paragraph one, if there is a recommendation from the planning commission, and then it comes back to the city council in, in twenty-twenty-four. The, the second item that was there, we kind of talked about that last week, was that it's, or two weeks ago, it's clear with, I think it's clear with that, that the, that the council reserves the right, again, after input from the planning commission to modify the waiver or to remove the waiver and require compliance with hard surfacing requirements of the Norfolk City Code. If, maybe the different time, a different place, dust becomes more of a problem when we don't have the timely rains that we've experienced, or, or those sorts of things. But in any event, number two, if you embrace that, would allow this council to redesign the modification. So those are the changes. If that's something that you want to consider, you would need to make an amendment, or make a, make a motion to amend, was on the agenda last week, with these, with these modifications that are in the agenda for your consideration tonight, and then you could go on with that from there and make any other changes that you might deem appropriate.
Okay, and with that all being said, counsel, is there anything, any questions you might have of Clint in his explanation here? Okay, all right. Then I would ask for a motion to amend resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty to include the items that were noted in blue on the copy of the resolution that's certainly been distributed out there and included in our agenda packet.
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to amend. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, now I would like a motion to approve resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty as amended.
Your Honor, I'd move approve of resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty as amended. Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty as amended. Ready to vote? We need nothing from you? Okay, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-fifteen dash twenty as amended is adopted.
All right, we'll move on then to consideration of ordinance number five-three, five-five, amending the fee schedule contained in section two-five of the city code to increase ambulance fees related to assist-only calls, to adjust sewer rates for residential, commercial, and industrial classification by an average of six percent, and to adjust the minimum special waste fee, to include a reservation fee for stages at Central Park and Skyview Park, include a mechanical permit fee for packaged terminal air conditioners with an operative day, operative date of September first, twenty-fifteen. This ordinance, number five-three, five-five, passed on first reading at the July twentieth city council meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to approve ordinance five-three, five-five on second reading.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor?
Second.
We have a motion with a second for the discussion at all? Okay. Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section two-dash-five of the official city code to increase ambulance fees related to assist-only calls, to increase sewer rates, to include reservation fees for stages at Central Park and Skyview Park, to include a mechanical permit fee for packaged terminal air conditioner, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, I would ask you to please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance five-three, five-five carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance five-three, five-five on third readings, since it's a no discussion situation, and there was no real input from the public or anything today. Second, Beth.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number five-three, five-five on third reading. If no further discussion, I'm going to ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance five-three, five-five carries on third reading.
All right, and next is consideration of approval of the draft National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, categorical exclusion for federal aid recreational trails project document for the Norfolk, North Fork Riverfront Trail Project, including the closure and the vacation of Nebraska Avenue from First Street to Oak Street. I'm looking for consideration.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the said draft that I am going to let Mark talk about.
All right, yeah, before you, as a proposed draft, NEPA categorical exclusion, and again, NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act. Just to recap, this trail, as we have on the projector, is a proposed trail that will start at Third and Elm, run along the river, across First Street, on, you know, at the north side of the river, will cross First Street there, and then a loop through Johnson Park, and then essentially end at Roche Avenue and Cottonwood. This draft document includes a recommendation for the closure and vacation of Nebraska Avenue from First Street to Oak Street. If approved, the draft will be sent to Gaiman Parks, Nebraska Gaiman Parks for their review, and after their review and approval, they would forward that on to Federal Highway for their final review and approval. If approved here tonight and at those other state and federal level, we would then proceed with final design as it relates to closing Nebraska Avenue. If, right now, I guess, just to give you a little background, that if, if Nebraska Avenue is closed, we would essentially be removing the access from First Street and then closing the street down and removing a portion of the street there by the park building, and then, so that western two-thirds would then be converted to trail, and we would likely try to reuse the existing street surfacing for the trail surface. And then the eastern half would still be vacated, but yet we would use that for a driveway to access a proposed parking lot, essentially where the park buildings are now. And this action tonight... And this action tonight would not close this immediately. It gives us direction to proceed forward with the project to, to close it down. So your action tonight will just kind of let us know what to do in the future, and we will prepare the documents when that time comes. Another thing we are considering with this closure is the timeliness as it relates to the bridge reconstruction project on Norfolk Avenue. So that is something else we are taking into consideration when we're going through this process. With that, I'd answer any questions?
Well, Mark, are you saying that the dates of the bridge and the possible closing of Nebraska Avenue would not coincide?
We, that's, that's what we would try to do, is, is make that happen. That would probably mean delaying a portion of, if not the entire trail project. It depends on how Gaiman Parks and, and Federal Highway would allow us to handle that, if, if we could bid it as a phased project, or, or if we just had to delay it all. I'm not, we're not exactly sure how that would play out, but we would be very cognizant of that. That way, we're not creating an extreme bottleneck there.
Thank you.
No, there's been, some neighbors live on Oak Street and had issues with parking, off-street parking especially in that area on East Prospect and onto their overflow onto their street. If Nebraska Avenue is closed, how are we going to address that issue as far as traffic flows with their, those individuals?
Um, I mean, it's, the, the traffic will obviously likely increase if Nebraska Avenue is going through on Prospect Avenue and all that traffic. We go down Oak Street to Norfolk Avenue or up to Prospect Avenue. There are going to be additional parking within the park, you know, by, by the removal of the street park or the park building down there, that will provide parking there. We're also looking at potentially expanding some of the parking there off of that drive off of Prospect Avenue.
Where's Oak Street? For me on the, as I'm looking at this, it runs between Prospect and?
CDE and East Prospect?
I do.
Right, straight south, right down.
Yes. It's the east, it's the road going on the east edge of the park, basically.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Again, Mark, the, the park buildings are coming down, are set to come down.
Right, yes.
In conjunction with some of this other work next year.
Yeah, I think the timeframe of that is, is that the new building will be this winter?
Soon as we build, we're, we're in the process of preparing the specifications and bid documents for the new building, new parks, streets building, public safety building that's going to go on Southeast Street at the current street facility. Once that building's up and running, then we will prepare to tear down the other buildings. So as soon as we can get that done, next year sometime would be my best estimate on that.
Okay.
How, how would, how would it work for, if you live on Oak Street, how you, if you came in, how would you turn around and go back out?
If you lived on Oak Street?
You know, if you drove, came?
Well, Nebraska Avenue will still be open east of Oak Street, so you'll still be able to get from, if you're, if you're coming, if you say you're coming from Prospect down Oak Street, you'll still be able to go east on Nebraska Avenue.
East and over to Ottawa.
Yeah, so there, there won't be a, a dead end created. The only, I guess, dead end would be the parking lot itself, which you'd be able to turn around there, so. But no, the, the, the public right of way would still be maintained for street traffic.
Okay.
Mark, we had always talked about doing a traffic count on that road. Did we ever do that?
On Nebraska Avenue?
We did do it.
We did.
Say they were in the range of 500 ADT?
That, is that?
Yeah.
Probably 500 vehicles per day?
500 vehicles per day, yeah.
And one gentleman was very concerned about public safety and, and for emergency responders getting to his neighborhood if Nebraska Avenue is closed would, I mean, you're the next fire chief. What's your opinion on?
Yeah, I can directly hear that. You know, typically, you know, in my memory at least, when I used to drive those vehicles, they'll go up the East Prospect Avenue, sometimes they'll use that street as well that we're going to close, and also they'll use Norfolk Avenue to access it. And I'll just determine the location of the address and find the most suitable route to get there. So this change won't have a major impact on public safety.
Will not?
No, will not.
I noted that part of the analysis in this report was that with increased use, hopefully, of the trail and pedestrians within the park, that closing Nebraska Avenue would add to public safety in terms of pedestrian safety.
Yes, because that'd be one less conflict between pedestrians and vehicles there.
I think the, I mean, I, this is a great, obviously, it's a great deal for this Johnson Park to have this sort of renovation and these, and these trails running through there, but one of the major concerns of the neighbors in the area, I had the opportunity to go down there and meet with a few of them at around 5:30 one evening, and, and that place was packed. It was crawling with cars. I mean, it really was.
The park was?
Yeah. They had Johnson Park and just the sheer fact that there's so many, there's a business down there and the school and whatnot. And, I mean, for me to park, I had to look for a spot to park. And so I think the parking issue is, is really relevant. I mean, obviously, if you go to Johnson's Park at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, maybe it's not a big deal, you know, or when you take your kids there, you don't see that. But the people that live there are impacted by this parking. I know that they've came to a couple of things and talked to us about it. So I think, I'm not so sure, and when they're, when they're doing their study and they're doing their design work, they really took that into account. At least, I didn't feel that way when we met here that evening, and we're talking with the design, the people that are designing this. It's felt, I kind of felt like they were like, man, eh, it's no big deal, no big deal.
Well, the parking, keep in mind that we're going to have increased parking.
We're going to keep the parking. We were asking, they were.
And we're going to increase parking.
But they didn't ever answer the question as far as how many parking stalls we're going to have, what additional parking are we going to have? That was never, that, that question was never answered, and I kind of feel like we need to have an answer to that question so we can justify.
Would you like to have the exact number of additional parking stalls, councilman?
I think it's important to be able to state that to people who live in that area.
No, that'd be part of the design phase, once we get to that part, that new parking line or additional parking, that's going to be where those old Johnson Park buildings are. We'll be able to gather that number for the council and for the community at that time, unless you have an idea. Ask them now.
And the parking lot, as it, as it is now, as part of this project, it won't be a paved parking lot. It'll be just a gravel parking lot, so I'm not sure if there's going to be a.
I think the big, they were kind of talking about utilizing what's there now, you know, obviously.
Right.
If that didn't, if that road didn't run through all the way through, you'd come in off East Prospect Avenue, there'd be parking there. I think the, what we were asking was how much more parking would you be able to put in on that through street? And they were like, well, it depends if it's one-way, we have to go one-way, or we can keep it a, you know, through street or not.
What we've, what we've done is we're looking at enhancing the parking on the north-south leg that comes right off of East Prospect Avenue. We're going to, Pat is going to redo the hedge in there that's old, move it to the east so that they'll be able to come in and park at a 90-degree to the driveway and then back out and go back out on the East Prospect. We looked at trying to, to have parking along and use the trail on the area going east-west there. There isn't enough room to safely have the trail and parking and access through there. So, we'll have parking on the north-south piece, and then there'll be parking over where the buildings are being removed, and that parking can be expanded to fill that entire area if we need to. So, going to enhance the parking over by the playground, add parking where the park buildings are now, and that'll be open when the parks open and, and that type of stuff.
Is there a way to have that available to the public with, you know, I mean, obviously, we're making a pretty major vote here to close down a street in our community without, without me feeling 100% comfortable in what, you know, is going to happen in our neighborhood?
Again, we're not closing the street immediately, and the street's going to be open as long as.
But we're putting the process in motion.
Absolutely. We have to, we have to make a decision in order for these documents to move forward. NEPA needs to know, I mean, this review, the game commission needs to know exactly what our feelings are as a community to move this process, because it's, your options are to leave it open or closing. So, I know there's strong desire for a lot of folks in the revitalization of Johnson Park and the Riverwalk to have it closed and incorporate that as part of the trail, obviously. But the neighborhood does have some concerns.
We're also going to have two, three or four stalls that'll come off of Park Avenue, or not Park Avenue, but Oak Street over there where the existing drive comes through there. So we're going to take the space we need for the trail, and then the rest of that space, it's, it's kind of a wide driveway through there now, convert that to parking as well. So I think at the, at the end of the day, we'll have more parking in Johnson's Park than we have today. It just won't all be over by the playground equipment, some will be over where the existing park operations are, and those folks won't be there operating out of there, so the city vehicles will be gone, all the work vehicles will be gone, all of that space will be available for citizens using the park to park.
Anyway, I think given that with the, the goal of improving Johnson Park and increasing usage of a historic park in a great neighborhood and town, that reconnecting the park to the river like it once was makes a lot of sense in terms of the redesign, just my opinion, but I think that's why in the design plans that this was the preferred option.
And again, I don't, I don't disagree with anything. I agree with you, Josh, that we, this is a great opportunity for our community to improve Johnson Park. The only thing I don't feel comfortable with is I don't know if we have a plan in front of us today to address the parking issue that the, I mean, we're explaining a plan, but we don't have something that I can visually look at and say, here's how we're going to do this, and here's how we're going to fix it, without, you know, it's just, it hasn't been developed yet. It's been talked about, it's been thought about, but the, you know, we're, we're talking about, yeah, we're going to be able to do this, but there's, I mean, there's people with some real concerns about it.
I think this allows for preparation of the plan.
Right. And yeah, and that's, that's exactly correct. We are not allowed to move on with final design of the trail until the NEPA document is approved, if I'm stating that correctly, Dennis, but I, that is the process.
Would it be a, a fair statement to say that, you know, we got a lot of land, we got a lot of area there, that once we get things developed, there, there's always opportunity to, to put in more parking spots? I mean, I would hope that, you know, we would use this to the max, and there would always be that option to, to be able to add more parking spots later on down the road if, if we needed.
Absolutely, councilman. You know, and that whole area to the south where the buildings are, that's, once those buildings are removed and that area is cleaned up and recreated and looking nice, it's really going to open up, open up nice to the building and park. You know, and hopefully, you know, the community's dream comes true and Johnson Park is revitalized and used a great deal, obviously, is the goal. So that additional parking would be needed, and we'll have the room to expand as Dick is describing.
In regards to that parking lot that we're talking about, you know, where the current buildings are, are we talking about favoring that parking lot to allow people to know where to park? I mean, if you have just a gravel parking lot, people, you know, take at will on how to park. So when you put cables in it, you people have a better idea of where to park, therefore maximum mileage.
And we can address, you know, all those kind of parking issues we'll address as we, as we get to that point, and we get the building stored down, we start to look at the situation over and decide how to utilize that area the best. That naturally comes as, as the trail gets developed, because we're doing any parking for any park project, you know, we're going to develop that with the project. So all those things will be taken into consideration.
I'd like to speak.
Can I ask you to come forward? We'll ask you to state your name if you would, please. Appreciate your being here.
My name is Kimberly Davis, and I live at 310 Oak Street. Thank you, Shane, for hearing us. Everybody has been talking about the parking problem. That's only a small part of what we see happening in our community. If you close Nebraska Avenue, Prospect Avenue is going to pick up all of that traffic and then some. Prospect right now is already overflowed. I had asked if you were going to do a study on the number of cars on Prospect. Did you do that? That travel Prospect every day?
Prospect, we, we asked the police and sound like it's going to be allowed before we'd be able to get the equipment there to do that study.
We have a daycare right across the street from my home. I have a school one block down from my home, and now you're talking about closing a major artery into our neighborhood.
You know, I wish I could tell you I, I have a vision for how all this would lay out. I certainly want you to know that your concerns have been heard, and I'm comfortable, though, in that what it is that we're going to do is our darndest, to make sure that we're at least giving consideration to what needs to happen down there to make the, the transversing in the area. I realize it's going to be a change, and, but I also want us to take into consideration the efforts to have a great trail there, and I do think the ability to keep that trail a little clearer to, you know, cars and such, is something that certainly has been a point of discussion. I don't know. I'm looking for other input here. Is there something I'm missing that, I mean, I understand, I know that that daycare has been a real issue for everybody's consideration. I get that, but I got to believe there's ways that we can work through that. I think we see that at every single school that we have in this community when it comes to drop off and picking up.
But you're not closing streets in those other communities?
I understand that. We do have some, though, that go a one-way direction that has really been effective, I believe, in helping us try to control it. I think we have police that are more than willing to be out there to watch what's happening and to be able to give us some, certainly some ideas on how it is that we might be able to better control.
But if we, if you vote tonight to close Nebraska Avenue, then that's it. There, there's no option of going back.
Is that a true statement, Dennis? Or, Mark, or?
I think, you know, we're basically going in and seeking approval of the alternative with Nebraska Avenue closed, getting all the environmental approvals okayed, and then just moving through with the process of implementing those, those approvals as the, this project comes to fruition and the Norfolk Avenue Bridge comes to fruition.
It's my understanding that there were two different renditions of, of what we could do with the park. One, keeping Nebraska Avenue open.
Yes.
Couldn't we go with leaving it open and seeing how it works, and then, if possible, closing it down instead of voting to close it here and now?
I understand your question, and again.
We got to decide one of the, we have to decide one or the other to move forward with the project.
Because?
Because of the NEPA documents that require us to make, have the pre-planning documents in place as a community to understand what we're doing to move forward with the project. They don't want you to say if, and, or, and but. They want you to do one or the other, so you can move forward as a community and as a project.
So Shane, if we were to move forward and leave Nebraska Avenue open, does that give us an option at a late to further study it, find out more about the parking, and then decide to close Nebraska Avenue?
Perhaps, I guess would be my best answer to that. However, I mean, they're looking at a totally encompassing trail project here, so they want to know where that trail's going to lay out and, and how it's going to serve the community, you know? So if you, if you go back in there, and Dennis, maybe you can speak more directly to this, and then reevaluate it and then close Nebraska Avenue, you got to decide what you're going to do with that link of trail there. I mean, I, they're looking at it comprehensively, as they should. It's really just, just part of the process, so perhaps, again, Dennis, what do you think?
It's a lot easier to put the trail in if they know exactly where, you know, where it's supposed to follow. And this is an option, but again, I would, I guess, point out that when it comes to trails, proximity to traffic is not desirable, you know, and it, again, the study points out that, or suggests that closing Nebraska Avenue would make the trail safer for every, everyone's use throughout the park.
If that's the case, I'd like to make the example of Third and Elm and the bike trail that you have there that's like two foot wide with little bicycles painting on it. How safe is that?
Third and Elm.
That, that is the bike tra, trail that was painted on the street.
Bike trail on the street.
Oh, yes.
It's much wider than two foot.
Maybe three.
Much wider. Six or seven.
And you know, and, and your point is well made there in that, that's truly, I think that's the only place in this community that we have such thing, and that part of the reasoning was, as we hear from our great trails group, that they'd like to see trails within this community much more than what we have right now, is one of those abilities for us to take a street that is not really a busy street and actually see how it works.
And also to remind mayor council that bikes are, are designed and used. And also to remind Mayor Council that bikes are designed and utilized to move with the traffic as well. Bicycles and traffic, they, you use the street as a bicycle, you use trails, you use streets, you use roadway.
To further expand on Councilman Merrill's comments, it would be my opinion if we go with an option to leave Nebraska open as we work through this, that we will end up building a piece of trail that will have to be removed and reconstructed if you make a decision in the future to take out Nebraska Avenue and tie the river and the park back together as Councilman Mooney suggested. With it closed, we're going to try to use the existing surfacing of the street so that if we do make those further improvements, that you're not taking out a new trail, you'd be taking out an old street and replacing it with a, with a trail in that location. So, that would be my opinion as what's going to happen if we go the other route.
So, it would be your opinion that we would not have time to have any further discussion on the parking issue prior to starting construction of a trail? If I understand correctly?
You can have more discussion about the parking issues, but you will either be taking away green space to add additional parking or maximizing the area where the existing buildings are and we most certainly will try to do that. Part of that is, is we'd like to put some green space back where those, those buildings are and kind of lay out the parking so that we can have both and as we had a constituent suggest, we'll do everything that we can to, even though it's a gravel parking lot, provide some structure as to how the parking goes in there so that we don't have one vehicle taken four stalls.
Well, thank you for listening.
Well, we're here to listen and, and like I say...
This is my home and you're taking it away and I'm angry. My neighbors are angry.
I do. I respect that.
I am all for bike trails. I lived in Europe for 10 years. I didn't own a car. It was about bicycling. I know how important they are, but I also know how important my community is. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I need you to sign in, if you would, for me, please. Is there a pen up there?
Oh, yes, there's.
And I'm going to ask that you understand for us to, we're going to do our darndest to make it the very best that we can that's going to take care of the needs of an entire community area. So, I realize, like I say, I appreciate your being here.
I just know it's easier to add to rather than take away from. So, it's easier to add to taking away Nebraska Avenue than it is putting it back.
Okay. All right. I understand your point. John, are you coming forward?
Yes, please.
And you'll speak and sign in for us as well?
I'm John Downey. I'm not officially representing the Trails Committee, but I'm part of that. And while this, this entire project wasn't a Trails Committee brainchild, we are fully in support of that. It does connect ni, just to back up a little bit, it does connect nicely with what the projects we've already got in place are, the projects that we'd like to plan in the future are. And, and we're also, as a Trails Committee, very excited on the possibility of having some trail that would connect this to Norfolk Avenue under the bridge and then farther east to the trail that goes to the roundabout, flood control trails, down to the Memorial Crossings trails and then, and then, sky's the limit for that. This would also connect up to the YMCA, Northeast Community College and parts farther north and west. I understand that the, the issues on this, and I don't live in that area, first off, so I'm not gonna, I'm not going to say that anybody's wrong by not wanting that street closed, but I'd just comment that in order to make Johnson's Park and that part of the North Fork of the River the viable recreational area that we all seem to be wanting to make it, having a quote-unquote busy street running through it seems counterproductive. You know, if we want to use Johnson's Park and then tie it in with the river, it just doesn't work having a street running down through the middle of it. And I think that's really kind of the issue that we're looking at here and I fully understand what people are saying about not wanting to close something that connects their neighborhood to the rest of the world. It's not a comfortable situation for anybody to be in. But if we are speaking strictly on the topic of making this a good park, that seems to be the, the best solution is closing that and providing whatever adequate parking is adequate, which I have absolutely no modicum of knowledge of. But, but as far as parks and trails go, if you're wanting to make that someplace that's a good place to go hang out and utilize, having a street down through the center of it just doesn't really work.
I appreciate those comments, John. I guess I would echo a little bit when the American Society of Landscape Architects came here to make this project their volunteer project of the year. They talked a lot about that, about many communities, you know, killing to have a natural waterway running just off of downtown and connecting to a park. But the way things are right now, we've really isolated the park from the river and a big part of renovation and improvement and restoring Johnson Park to its, its historic roots does call for reconnection of the river to the park.
And we're already, just one last thing, we're already seeing kind of a, a very small, so far revitalization of the use of the Norfolk River for some recreational purposes. There's an entrepreneur that's trying to do that now and, and I know that that is part of, from what I've seen at least of some of the designs of this, that's part of that, is to try to make that a little more doable, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
When, Your Honor, I'd have to echo Councilman Mooney's concerns and those expressed by John. And I understand we don't like change where, where we may lose what we call a busy street, but to me, if you're running a busy street and you're trying to completely develop this Johnson Park area and the, and the Riverwalk and that, you're making a major error on the side of, you're saying that it's unsafe for traffic to be going back onto these other areas, but you're trying to, to influence or impact the safety of that park by running a major street through it. I, that's, that's just poor design, poor planning. It would be a poor initiative if this council decided to not close that street.
Doesn't First Street cross through the trail?
I'm sorry?
Doesn't First Street cross the trail, or the trail crosses First Street?
Twice.
Yes.
Twice. So, what's the difference between my little Nebraska Avenue and First Street?
The, as I see it, Your Honor, and I, I don't really want to debate it, but I'm, the, the trail crosses First Street at two small portions. Always Nebraska Avenue runs, what's that, 400 foot, 600 foot long?
Something like that.
So, there's, there's what the difference is. 120 foot versus 600 foot.
And what's in comparison, Dennis, you said the traffic count on Nebraska Avenue came out to be about 500. How does that compare with, with so-called busy streets in the community?
Not sure how to answer that question, but I'm guessing that First Street's got in the neighborhood of 10 times that amount of traffic, probably in that 5,000 vehicles per day traffic.
Closer to 12,000.
North Lake?
12,000, you said?
Yeah, he's looking at, uh, traffic counts.
The North Lake, Norfolk Avenue and First Street is 11,950, 213.
So, 500 is in a busy street in comparison?
Not to First Street and probably not to, Prospect's probably got more, a little more traffic than that on it as well.
I don't, I don't agree with, disagree with Josh or Jim on the fact that it's much safer to have a, obviously to have a trail running through a park, not attached to a street. However, the issue I have this evening is I don't really see, I mean, how we're totally addressing the issue that the residents are having in the neighborhood before we make this vote. And I have a feeling that if we make the vote and we close it down, we've missed our window to try to discuss and address the issues that they're having legitimately. I mean, they are, I'd encourage you guys to go down there at a certain time of the day and see what they're talking about and, and...
Is that when they're picking up from daycare? Is that it?
I don't know what it, I don't, there was probably a dozen families in the park, using the park and they mu, they must have drove there.
Sure.
And they were parked around the outside of it.
Which is great.
And then you have the people that live on the street, obviously, and then you had, yeah. There's just a lot of traffic. It is, it's there and it's an issue and I don't know, I, I wish we could address, you know, to give some people some sort of peace of mind before we...
Yeah, I understand that, Shane. I respect that, but...
The only peace of mind I can give them is to trust and be patient and once the, once the project is done, the parking will be there. I mean, right now, we can't wave a magic wand and do anything about it. If it's on-street parking that's a concern, there's not only, there's only so much we can do there with on-street parking. So, I mean, I don't know how you're going to boilerplate something and put it together and say, it shall be this, other than we're going to try to accommodate the park because it's going to be a revitalized park that's going to need parking spaces. So, the two go hand in hand and that's where the trust comes in.
Any other discussion here, Monk?
And I guess to just reiterate what Dennis said before, the thought that there could actually be more parking by the time this is done with the park through the modification.
I don't want to ignore you again if you'll sign in for us and state your name.
If I can write because I shake.
It's all right. I think we can, that's pretty good at making things out. I do remember when that daycare first talked of going in there and one of the concerns that was expressed was going to be parking and traffic. So, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. My name is Paula Pennington. I live in the middle of Oak Street, 306 Oak, so I'm just south of the daycare. So much emphasis has been put on the parking, but you're not going to find anybody that works at the daycare parking over in the park and walking over to the daycare. They park on Oak Street, they park on Prospect, as do the teachers in the school. They park all along because there isn't adequate parking for them. Teachers are not going to park over in the park. They're not going to park on the south end of Oak Street and walk to the school. So, the main issue is the traffic, which this gentleman said would increase during particular times of the day, there is additional traffic. This would be, you know, compounded. We have cars that go through the alley already. I think people would be going through that to try to get away from Prospect. If they go down Oak, they're still going to go east to go back to Norfolk Avenue, so they're going to cut through that parking or through the alley and Cottonwood. The alley right now has a fence that if you come up to the north end of the street, you can't see to the, to the east. So, people are going to be pulling out and you're going to have that additional danger, you know, you're going to have that additional concern. So, besides parking, it's the traffic. It's the traffic.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. You bet. Thank you. Okay, Council?
I've got some questions.
Come on up, will you? Because I need you to sign in for us, if you will, please. We need to have this recorded so that...
I'm Bruce Finley. I live on 412 Hastings, but I used to live right next to Cottonwood. Is the North First Street, is that being closed just for temporary? Is that the, is just temporarily being closed so that you could put the, that little strip in there on the east side of it?
North First Street?
We're not, we're not closing North First Street. That's just, that's just the crosswalk you're seeing with the big orange sign. It's kind of misleading.
Oh, which, which street has been closed?
The red one. That's where the red is there.
Oh, down there by the river?
Yeah.
That's been closed?
That's what we're talking about closing, yes.
Oh, okay. Now that makes so much more sense. Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to ask about that.
And when Mark talked about that the street would be physically removed at, Nebraska would be physically removed at First Street, just to create a barrier for, make sure that we don't have cars trying to get into the trail area.
Oh, I understand. That makes sense.
I'm glad you asked. Anyone else with any comments or I want to shut you off?
I just thought something else. You're talking about the beautifying the park and making it, you know, something stupendous, which is wonderful, but over the years, the backstop has been removed. It's a small family park. Backstop has been removed on the north side of the park next to picnic tables. We were told this was done because of the, the, down by Taizuka, that they've got a number of playing fields. But at the park, people want to come and spend time with their families. They aren't, they aren't going to come here and picnic and then go way south to play ball. They want to play ball and not have to chase the ball out in the street. The fact that it seems like so many of the parks are wanting to be made into, or people wanting to make them into exceptional things, you know, where you've got additional, you're talking pavilion for shows or whatever. But it's a small family park and if you, if you close off First Street, or not First, but through the park to make parking spots there on the north side and take away from the south because of the trail, you're taking away a lot of parking spots where people would be parking to go to the picnic tables. They don't want to park over here and then have to walk to Point B. They don't want to be clear across Nebraska parking to walk back up into the park, you know, for their picnic. They want to be able to park along the, along that road that goes through underneath the trees so they're, they're close to their destinations.
Well, and I would tell you, we have park people here that I would guess are going to come up with some great ideas on how maybe to better lay out that park. I mean, you know, please understand that the efforts are to make better and to connect it with trails. And I think, again, you know, I look at Chief Meisner back there, I know we've been down in that area before, looking at driving in the area and everything you say is absolutely true, but it exists there certainly because of the traffic at the school, the comings and goings. We've tried hard to come up with some better ideas and ways and we're going to be challenged again. I, I don't disagree with you, but I, again, this, this council will make the decision and it's never easy when we have citizens that certainly are directly affected.
Right.
But we always have to go back to what is it that's going to let us make better this community for the whole? And I promise you that whatever the decision is, that we're going to give it our very, very best to make better down there, the issues of parking and transversing through the area. So, it will be a challenge, but I think we're, I think we're capable of making some wise decisions to, to hear what you said and to try to make better so that it is going to be an inconvenience, it's going to be a change, but change isn't always bad, so...
When you've got traffic, it is bad. When you've got a grade school and you've got traffic like that, it is bad.
Right.
The other, the other issue that I have, and it, to me, it would make this maybe more simple, why does this bike trail have to go through Johnson Park and change the whole, you know, outlook of the park? Why go up and around and back down? Why not have your trail just go across Nebraska Avenue and go across First Street? If people want to go to the park, if they want to ride their bike in the park, they can do it. There isn't anything that's stopping. They can, they can go off the trail and go over and look at flowers or whatever, but big changes don't need to be made in order for that to happen. You don't see people going through with their bikes now, yet you do see people going up First Street and around. So, this would be the other option, do away with that trail that goes through the park and you can just go across Nebraska Avenue and go up towards the railroad tracks and across and back down the railroad tracks and...
I don't think that's anything we can do at this point. We've gone forward and asked for funding help and that's why we're in the situation that we are tonight, to make a decision.
They can, they can go off the trail and go over and look at flowers or whatever, but big changes don't need to be made in order for that to happen. You don't see people going through with their bikes now, yet you do see people going up First Street and around. So, this would be the other option. Do away with that trail that goes through the park, and you can just go across Nebraska Avenue and go up towards the railroad tracks and across and back down the railroad tracks and.
I don't think that's anything we can do at this point. We've gone forward and asked for funding help, and that's why we're in the situation that we are tonight, to make a decision so that it can go forward.
Well, and with that thought, then you've got our ideas, and that could, I would assume that money, if there is money there, that that could be implemented maybe someplace else to make that a little bit smoother, you know, for the people in the area. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Daryl Novacek, and as a lot of you may know, I have been a proponent of developing the river for quite a few years now, and the reason.
Tend to be exact, Daryl, I think. Ten, I believe, to be exact.
Ten, yes, exactly. We've been meeting for ten years, and like I said, it's been, it's been a long time, and I guess I've been in this community for, I've lived here for 30 years now, and I think this is a great community to live in. And one of the things that I support, I guess, is the fact that anything that we can do to attract young people and keep our retirees here in town, that's what we want to do. And as I see what this thing, this project could do for Norfolk as far as extending the trail system and attracting young people, I think they all like to walk, they like to eat better, and like I said, this is, this is something that I'm, I'm really excited about. I do want to make sure that everybody is safe, and I think, you know, with this project and the school system that's down there, but when the Nebraska Society of Architects put this plan together, and I take my hat off to everybody that worked on this, this project as far as applying for the grant, because the society must have felt this, this was a very worthwhile project, or we wouldn't have been awarded all these funds to make this happen. So, again, I'm, I'm, take my hat off to everybody who worked on this, this project and got the money for us to proceed here. I'm, I'm just, I'm just hopeful that, like I said, we can proceed with this, and I also feel that closing Nebraska Avenue is a major factor in this whole project, and although I don't live there, I don't travel there, I would hope that the benefits of a nice park there and the benefits of other people using this trail system would outweigh the, the closing off of that one street there. Dennis, when you talk about, you said 500 vehicles a day, I mean, how many of those are city vehicles from the parking garage that go there?
We have no way to account those.
Okay.
I mean, this was a device that was out there and counted every vehicle that went.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just curious, and several of those too are just the city vehicles that.
Yeah, there was, there was a city operation there where those, all the employees came and went at least once.
Sure.
And probably twice each day, and then they all, that's a, that's a centralized maintenance facility, so they all got other vehicles and left from there.
You bet.
For other activities, so.
You bet. When, when I first saw this plan here, it was my understanding, and I don't know if this was to scale or not, but didn't, can't we count those parking stalls? You know, there's concern with parking there. I mean, doesn't it give us an indication of how many stalls that they have accounted for in those two or three areas there and help us out as far as knowing how much additional parking we're going to have versus on the street there?
Yeah, there was a conceptual plan that showed the parking stalls. This is not that plan.
Okay.
It was a conceptual plan.
So, anyway, when I saw this plan, it looked like to me that they had, had done a pretty good job as far as adding additional stalls to this. So, anyway, I just wanted to voice my opinion. Like I said, my, my purpose for this, I guess, is, is supporting any worthwhile project that will keep and attract young people here in town and keep our retirees here in town and go from there. And I think this is a great project that would add to some of the, be another perk for, for the young people to come here and walk and, and whatever. So, I do appreciate everybody's effort on this, and like I said, I do want to be, have everybody to be safe and, and not create any additional traffic issues, but again, I have a lot of faith in this councilman, the council and everything else, that they will make sure that that happens. So, thank you.
Okay, Daryl.
Thanks, Daryl. I just wanted to attest to that and Daryl's involvement in this over the years. I've been to many of those meetings, and Daryl's done a great job of collecting a lot of information and gathering input from the community and other outside groups. Also add this, when we as a community presented this plan at the review committee, statewide review committee for the recreational trails grant, it placed first out of 18 different projects, I think it was. So, this isn't something that was just drawn up on the back of a napkin. There was a lot of homework that went into this, input from statewide organizations, and so I, I think it's a good plan. I think it helps restore and revitalize Johnson Park to something we can all be proud of again.
We're all proud of it now.
And we respect that. Please understand that. We do respect that.
Ladies, I appreciate your, your opinion on this, I really do. I live in that area, and that is part of my regular running route. I'll run that four or five times a week, 365 days a year. And I run down East Prospect, I come up Oak, I go down East Nebraska. I've only encountered at, at the daycare, maybe two to three cars. This is over lunch hour, strictly only two to three cars there over lunch hour. And talking to some of the other neighbors around East Nebraska, you know, there's a lot of, they're, they're all for it. I know there is some opposition, but a lot of your neighbors are, are also for it, so it's, who live on East Nebraska as well. And this is going to affect them greatly as well.
If they don't live in the traffic area on Prospect.
There's going to be traffic there on East Nebraska, and they realize that, and they're excited for, for the park development as well.
Okay, guys, I think it's, I think it's time we move on. I think we've.
Is the, is the whole thing hinged on the fact that if we do or don't close?
What do you mean, is the whole thing?
I think it was.
Ask that again, is what?
You know what I'm saying, the whole, the application for the federal aid?
Right. Application, in order to go forward, we need direction from the council tonight on which way you want to go.
Which way we want to, which way we want to go?
Right.
You still apply either way.
Well, you apply, but the process, they need to know those answers.
I understand that. Either it's closed or it's not. You're still applying with the road closed or with the road open.
We have, we have applied for and received the grant.
Right.
We are in the environmental review process of determining exactly what we're going to build where to the best of our ability. There was two options. One was with Nebraska open, one with Nebraska closed. The NEPA document that you have in front of you was drafted with the alternative of closing Nebraska Avenue as the selected option.
Okay.
If you give us different direction, we'll go back and be revamping this and be back to you again.
So, with that being stated, where were we? We have a motion, we have a second. We've had plenty of discussion. I'm going to ask you to vote.
Voting in favor of the motion, Councilman Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muirin, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the motion, Councilman Clausen. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you all for coming out and expressing your opinions on it. We're going to move on to consideration of Resolution 2015-23, approving the final allocation of levy authority for the Norfolk Airport Authority for fiscal year 2015, 2016, allowing the Norfolk Airport to levy a property tax of $448,064.
Your Honor, at this time, I will be excusing myself from this board in so much as on July 16th, I signed a contract through my business with the Airport Authority to do some construction out there, and though I don't feel that it is necessarily a total conflict just because I'm doing work out there, I would like to resign or remove myself at this point in time so that there is no premonition or thought that there is some kind of conflict there, although when, when this comes back in the form of the general overall budget, I will not be abstaining at that time.
Okay. Fair enough, Councilman. All right. Do I have a motion to, to adopt 2015, approving the final allocation? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Discussion, please, from this council. I have one question. Dan, why don't you come forward, because I think I'm going to need for you to make some reference for me. I need to tell you that I sat down with Randy because there's a lot of times that I get a little confused on how this all works, and my understanding is that there was some effort done by our Airport Authority in which there was a way of, and help me out, Randy, because I'm not going to use the correct terminology, but some of these dollars were, what's the word? Help me. Were moved? That's, that's not the correct language, but that, that would allow that that $60,000 that we were looking at would be a lesser amount.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that we are all aware and correct in what the assumption is, so if you'll help.
The actual project cost increase, which would make you think that more dollars would be needed for this, but the Airport Authority's share of the project decreased because it went from being about 70% for the hangar and 30% for the taxiway to being about 60 and 40. And federal funds pay 90% of the taxiway and only, and, and the airport only has to pay 10% of that, whereas they have to pay back all of the hangar, even though part of that's a 0% loan. So, the actual debt service went down about $5,900 on this project, and there was already a $1,000 or more of cushion, and that $60,000 at the airport requested. So, the actual tax levy that's asked for is increasing $60,000 that the council said earlier in the year that they would allow for this for the amount that the debt service exceeded the hangar rent.
Right.
That number is about $7,000 more than what it looks like is going to be needed based on the way the bids come in.
And let me tell you, Dan, how that came up, because I remembered in an earlier discussion, you making a statement that if in fact it exceeded 1 million, you would not do it. Well, there was explanation given to me, but at that time, Randy went on to further explain to me that change. So, I just want the council aware of that, and I want us to make sure that we all understand that, that number that was first suggested as far as our approval of. I just share that with you, counsel, and obviously, we have the final allocation tonight for that levy authority.
Okay, well, I think Randy is right. So, so the numbers you're talking about is right. When we, when we budgeted the project.
Right.
A certain amount was in this hand and a certain amount was in this hand. 90% of this one gets federal money, and this one does not. So, the bids came in higher over here and lower over here. So, yeah, the total project is about the same amount of number, but we did get more reimbursement, reimbursement on the federal over here because this one, this one was a little bit higher. So, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we as a council, since that was the discussion that we had, is made aware of that, so.
So, Randy, can we amend that number then?
Yes, you can. And, you know, if you want to amend it down, that $7,000, you could, could do so tonight, and the actual decrease would be a little bit more than 7,000, because 7,000 is a budget number, and then their, their actual levy request takes into account the county treasurer's commission and also the delinquency allowance. So, there's about 4% additional levy authority over and above what their budget is for the property tax, if that makes sense.
So, that's going to be like a little over $7,000 for 10 years that we can save the taxpayers.
Yeah, if you, if you're wanting to increase their, decrease their budgeted property tax by $7,000, you decrease their levy, levy authority by $7,280, which would make the levy authority needed 400 and, let me see here, yeah, they're requesting 448,064. If you wanted to decrease that by the $7,000 we're just talking about, that would make that levy authority go down to 440,784.
Our accountant asked if he should come tonight. I wish this would have come up in our workshop. I can't, I can't speak for the, I don't work on the numbers the same as you do, Randy, and.
Well, let me say if I am wrong, if the council amends this tonight to reflect that number I just shot out, and Jerome says it's wrong.
Okay.
We got another council meeting coming up before that has to go off to the state. We have to have that off by September 1st, so there'll be another council meeting where if, if Jerome disagrees with those numbers, it can be corrected if, if in fact he thinks those are wrong.
Randy, did you talk to Jerome about this?
I, yes, I emailed Jerome what I thought was the decrease in the extra levy that I thought the Airport Authority was asking for, and he didn't dispute my numbers. He didn't say he agreed with them, I don't think, but he didn't dispute my numbers.
Okay.
We didn't get down to actually brass tacks of saying exactly what the levy allocation needed would be, but he said he was directed to request the $60,000, and he realized that that had gone down.
Dan, if you want, I mean, we can, you can make a motion to amend, or you can make a motion to table, because you still have time before we do the final.
Or you could make a motion to approve.
We could. We could.
Okay.
But, you know, like I say, it's, it's taxpayers' dollars we're playing with, Dan, so we're always trying to be darn careful in what it is that we do, as we well should be. So, and, counsel?
I think what he's saying too, Dan, is that that 7,000 is not going to hurt you, and if it does, we'll fix it, you know, with Jerome, so.
Well, and, and again, that's certainly, Dick? I mean, if you want to make a motion to amend, or if you want to table, whatever you want to do, we can do that, but.
I'd make the motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to amend that dollar amount to 440,784, Randy?
Correct.
Any further discussion at all?
And I'm sorry to believe the point, but in a nutshell, Randy, and again, can you tell me how this miscalculation came about?
It's not a miscalculation. There was allocations that changed, federal dollars that moved from.
You have more federal dollars in the previously budgeted.
Right. Right. Again, not a miscalculation. It's just a switch of federal dollars that are coming into the Airport Authority rather than what was first stated. And again, allocation.
Okay.
With that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution two, that the amendment to the resolution passes.
Ah, so now it's my fault. So, now we need an approval of the final allocation per the amendment of $440,784.
So, move.
Second.
A motion with a second? Again, unless you want to speak, Dan, we're going to vote. All right, let's vote.
Voting in favor of the amended resolution, council members Granquist, Langy, Clausen, Muirin, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the motion, Councilman Merrill. Resolution 2015-23 as amended is adopted.
And finally, is consideration of approval of ordinance number 5357, adding a definition for packaged terminal air conditioner to section 6-107 of the city code? Do I have a consideration for, a motion for? Do I have a consideration for, a motion for consideration of?
Let's make the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Trent, are you here to talk to this?
I am, Mayor. Commander Council, this comes, do you know the whole story behind the PTAC unit? I was gone, so I don't know if that all got explained, but...
We didn't explain it. So go ahead and explain it.
The, the PTAC unit is a packaged terminal air conditioner. It's something you typically find at hotels, motels, in your room. It sits, it's, it's all pre-made. It just slides into a bracket. Our current way that we deal with these things, residential and/or commercial, is by BTUs, which, if somebody was going to put a hundred of these in, in a hotel, it gets extremely expensive with our current rates. So we came up with a way to deal with packaged terminal air conditioners or PTAC units much cheaper. And we did a little figuring for a hotel scenario of a hundred and fifty rooms, which is a hundred and fifty PTAC units, it would, estimated cost of that would be around fifty-four hundred dollars in permit fees by our old way. Our new way with utilizing a twenty-five dollar, which our minimum fee is twenty-five bucks, for the first unit and thereafter, any additional unit, ten dollars, that permit fee basically comes down to fifteen hundred bucks. So I, I feel it's fair to deal with it. What we're looking at is, is condensation, is the drains and how we deal with all that. The rest of it's all pre-made. They just slide into the wall. So I think it's fair for the contractors. It's obviously much cheaper for the contractors and/or homeowners dealing with it this way, and that's, that's where this comes about. We had no definition for a PTAC unit in city code, so that's this. And then the, the two dash five, which you, you passed a little while ago for the permit fee, that's all tied together.
Okay.
So any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions at all, counsel? Okay, hearing done. Beth, do you have a short title for us?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section six dash one oh seven of the official city code to include a definition for packaged terminal air conditioner to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-three fifty-seven carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I make a motion, suspend rules and pass ordinance on second, third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number five three five second, five seven on second and third. If no discussion, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-three fifty-seven carries on second and third.
Okay, with that, seeing nothing more, we are adjourned.